Let's take it a little slower for a second.
You think we're good, Matt? Okay, oh, there we go, I see it.
I got it on mine.
I would like to call the Hamilton Central School District's organizational meeting out July fifteenth to order. I would ask that you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the law, and liberty of justice for all.
We'll be swearing in the re-elected board members. Michelle?
I, Michelle Jacobson.
I, Michelle Jacobson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of board member.
Of the office of board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
At the Hamilton Central School.
At the Hamilton Central School.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Jen?
I, Jennifer Jones.
I, Jennifer Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of board member.
The office of board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
At the Hamilton Central School.
At the Hamilton Central School.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the office of president.
Like to nominate Michelle Jacobson?
Do I have a nomination? Oh, sorry, any other nominations? Okay. Can I have a motion to nominate Michelle Jacobson as president of the Board of Education?
I'll move. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a nomination, or I would like to open the floor for nominations for office of vice president. Do I have a nomination for vice president for Board of Education?
Would you nominate Jen?
Any other nominations? Can I have a motion to nominate Jennifer Jones as vice president of the Board of Education?
I'll move.
Second. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we will swear in the vice president and president. Okay, Michelle?
I, Michelle Jacobson.
I, Michelle Jacobson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of president.
The duties of the office of president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
At the Hamilton Central School.
At the Hamilton Central School.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And Jen?
I, Jennifer Jones.
I, Jennifer Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of vice president.
Of vice president.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
At the Hamilton Central School.
At the Hamilton Central School.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Sorry, you, Michelle?
Thank you, Jody. Um, all right, I need a motion to approve the following school officers, three point one through three point one six, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I need a motion to approve the following other appointments and authorizations, four point one through four point two four, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to have a discussion, like we do every year, about who is going to be involved in which board committees. Um, so I'd like to open up the floor for that now. Um, we've got the two steering teams, the, um, Policy Committee, Inclusivity Committee, School Boards Institute, Advocacy Liaison, and then we need to talk about the Audit Committee as well.
I'm happy to stay on as for SBI and advocacy. But I'm open to other people too, if they want to be a part of it.
I'm good there, you guys good with that? Those, um, last year, we, uh, we have two for the, um, SBI. Um, does somebody else want to jump in for that?
I, I can, I think I was on it last year. Yeah.
I'm filling in my spaces, so when I read them, maybe get it right. Um, so then we've got, um, elementary and secondary steering. And policy and inclusivity.
I'd be happy to continue on the Policy Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I don't want to raise. I'd actually like to, um, work on the Inclusivity Committee this year, I haven't worked.
I was gonna say, since I'll be chairing the Search Committee, then maybe that one would be one that if somebody else wanted to take it.
I haven't been on that one yet, so that would be, um, a good experience for me and, you know, such, so.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on the, uh, Policy Committee as well.
Okay. I think you guys have done a great job.
I do too.
We're kind of in the middle of it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The big revisions.
Yeah, exactly, I think it'd be a little wonky if we switched that up at the moment, but.
And if anybody else is interested in inclusivity, I'm happy to, um, not take that space, but, yeah, um, I'm also happy to be on it as well.
I'm very happy and I'm on entry.
Okay.
I can also, especially as you're doing all of the work, no, you were on it last time, but now that you're on inclusivity, I can do secondary too.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Sure. Actually, it might be nice to have some, sort of, little, yeah.
Yeah, so that they kind of talk to each other a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. Um, Sung, are you good with staying on inclusivity then?
Yes.
And then Audit Committee, in the past, we have done it as a whole board, uh, but that's something that we're supposed to discuss every year, so, um, thoughts on whole or sub?
I think it works, it's worked well as a, as a whole.
I agree.
I think so too.
I agree as well.
I think with a larger board, it might make sense to do a subcommittee, but with us, um, and for the work that needs to be done for that, I think it's good for all of us to understand what's going on and, and listen to the auditors, um, and, and be able to have that connection. Any other thoughts on those before we move to the individual piece of the plan?
We just need, um, NISBA had a case on.
Oh, Jen said yes on that.
Please suggest it, yeah.
Um, so I need a motion to approve the following appointments, Amanda on Secondary and Elementary Steering Committee, Audit Committee as a whole, Corey and Sung as Policy Committee, Michelle and Sung as Inclusivity Committee, Jen and Amanda as School Board Institute, and Jen as Advocacy for NISBA, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as discussed and, and recommended.
Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who did that without even messing it up?
It's good.
Right? Um, I need a motion to approve the following designations, six one through six five, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion?
Bill, I just wanted to ask about, um, the school newspaper.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because this got brought up at, like, SBI, is that, is it the Observer Dispatch, is that the one that's always looking for news? The Sentinel?
The Daily Sentinel.
They're the ones really looking for a lot of school news, so I just wanted to, like, bring that up. I don't, I'll be completely honest, I don't have a newspaper in my hand a lot anymore.
Yeah.
Um, but I didn't know if that was something, like, worth discussion, or if there's a reason why we go with the Observer Dispatch, or any of that.
It's just the designated local newspaper for us with our, our geographic. The Rome Sentinel, Daily Sentinel is basically Rome, but they are branching out and covering other areas, so.
Okay.
If you want to designate the Daily Sentinel instead of the Observer Dispatch, it's fine.
Like I said, I didn't know, I just know at SBI, they were saying the Sentinel literally keeps calling schools and calling people, like, they want news.
Well, they have a local reporter who's very eager to cover, and he's been here a number of times.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't do two? We need one.
It has to be, they have to deliver it to the area.
Oh, they have to deliver it.
And I called when I first got here because, um, we had issues with, um, the juror going out, and then it was supposed to be two, we didn't have to deliver it to the area. And it's very expensive now to do a legal notice, so we would have to push it, so we're just.
Okay.
Good.
And know that we can push it easily to the other, okay, perfect.
Yep. I know that Ro, the Sentinel has been doing a lot online too, so I've seen a lot online, so it might not be a bad use as an extra supplement.
All those in our eclipse and stuff too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, well, that makes sense with the delivery.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Jody.
Other questions in the six one, six five range? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, that brings us to a motion to approve the following other school-related business, seven one through seven five, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as recommended by the superintendent.
Move. A second.
Um, discussion, just a point of clarity that the January meeting has been pushed a week, um, and so now it is on the fifteenth of January instead of the eighth, or whatever that date would be. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I need a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Move.
Second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna roll right into the next meeting, if you guys are good with that.
Okay.
Unless somebody needs a break between. Um, so I will call this meeting to order, um, the July fifteenth regular meeting at five forty-five P M. And, um, are there any other additions to the, to the agenda?
There are none.
Um, seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Move.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June twelfth, and the minutes of the board workshop on June twentieth?
Move.
A second.
Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion, um, to approve the following consent agenda, to, this consent agenda is three point one through four point one, as recommended by the superintendent.
Move.
Second. Any discussion through those? Or any comments on the policies?
Um, quick, um, Bill, how does it work with the, um, Code of Conduct, so if that gets adopted? When does that go out for public?
When does it go out for public comment?
Yeah, isn't there a?
It, it's already gone out.
Oh, it's had?
Yeah, 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 so we're at the adoption phase.
Okay.
And then, once you adopt it, then we'll push it out, um, to all the families.
Gotcha, okay.
Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, public comments? If anybody has any, please feel free to state them now, if there's nobody in the room. Um, there's a couple people in line with me, so, uh, we're gonna move on, but please add your comments, and we will get to you in the next public comment section. Um, personnel, um, we have a resignation. A motion to accept the resignation of Magla, Maglamin?
Magley.
Magley, sorry, Mayor, part-time food service helper, effective June twenty-seventh, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry for saying your name wrong. Um, I need a motion to approve a one-year leave of absence for Renee Merk as an elementary teacher, effective September one, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve Renee Merk as a teacher on special assignment for social, emotional learning, and family engagement, effective September one, twenty twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
Move.
A second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the following coaches, um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented, contingent upon significant participants, and as recommended by the athletic coordinator and superintendent.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Bill, I'm just wondering if we know, I see like there's some vacancies, um, especially like for the fall, I'm just wondering, like, do we have a plan for them, are they being advertised and currently interviewing, or?
So, um, Deb Welsh has been talking to people and kind of, so we're in the planning stage and trying to solicit some people. So, it hasn't been publicly advertised yet.
Okay.
But she has had conversations with people, so.
Great.
For the fall, it's modified cross-country, I thought we were anticipating maybe not having.
Yeah, we may not, but if we do, she might have somebody that is willing.
Okay, great.
Okay, other questions on the coaches? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, a motion to approve the recommendation of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, district response, uh, emergency response plan, this is a discussion item, um, that we need to discuss this plan for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So, there's really no huge changes to it, it's basically the same. Um, you know, we are required to do a certain amount of, um, emergency plans, fire drills, lockdowns, um, hold in place, we would plan for, um, so it's basically the same emergency plan for next year. Really, no really major significant changes.
Some of the language has changed.
Yeah.
The state is, is adopting new guidelines to try to make the universal language across the state. As far as actual plan and execution of certain items, depending on the situation, it's really changing.
Yeah.
Religion is changing, you know, usually for us, usually the case, on a annual basis, it's updating, um, personnel.
Contacts.
Contacts, and we're doing that, so. Rather official in our discipline, so.
Okay. Any questions before we let them run with that till next one? Um, then we'll move to six four, which is a motion to approve the non-resident tuition rate, um, and the list of pre-existing students for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Do we have that list?
Just one student. Um, do we have it in here, Jody?
No.
Okay.
It's the same.
Same student. Okay. Grandfathered in.
I'll move.
Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of things, um, I want to give you an update, kind of a year-end summary, um, the work that, um, Elena Main did with our partnership with Madison County. Um, so we are in year three, we just finished our third year, um, with the Madison County Mental Health Department, and services continue to grow. Twenty-two students were referred last year. Um, Elena currently holds a caseload of fifty-four total students, um, and that can, and she continues to fix up new referrals. This past year, she conducted seven hundred and forty sessions, which is substantial. So, overall, that, that partnership continues to grow, I think it provides a really valuable service to our district. Um, I know the county is very pleased with the services that are being provided here. Unfortunately, Elena is leaving us, um, she and, um, is moving to South Carolina, and so I'm working with the county on a replacement for her. So, they're currently interviewing, um, and we'll have somebody in place for the first of the year. But it continues to be a great program for us, and I think we should continue it for, for the expense, our return on investment is tremendous, so I think it's a great service.
Should go for the first of the year or beginning of the school year?
Beginning of the school year, sorry.
I was just like, we already have the last services, that's okay.
Beginning of the school year.
Okay, great.
Um, yesterday, uh, the State Ed Department presented a revised portrait of a graduate to the Board of Regents. Um, they just continued to revise some of the, um, um, framework that's going to be included. Um, the revisions coincide with some feedback from stakeholders throughout the state. Um, the portrait of gra, graduate, um, increased flexibility in student choice, multiple pathways to graduation, holistic, well-rounded education, real-world career readiness, and the opportunity to create equitable, inclusive educational systems. And it's all based around the culturally responsive framework, which I think is great. So, they've identified certain areas, um, to be academically prepared, to be a creative innovator, to be a critical thinker, an effective communicator, a global citizen, and a reflective and future-focused student. So, those are the areas that they've identified, and everything, again, is linked to that framework of being culturally responsive. The timeline remains the same, so we are at the installation phase, which is fall of twenty twenty-five to the summer of twenty twenty-seven. The next steps are, the state will release a portrait of graduate rubrics with guidance, so that is forthcoming. And then, learning expectations, um, it'll be reformatted with standards with the guidance. And the required instruction in financial literacy and climate education are going to be two areas that we are going to have to, uh, look to deliver to students, and those will be effective for school year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, we have to plan for that this year to be ready in September of twenty-six for implementation. And then, we're waiting on release on new credit requirement details and cohort phases. So, those are the next steps with the graduation requirements, so, all good stuff. And then, lastly, I'd like to share with you, we received yesterday, if you can pass these, Michelle. And those.
I only have four.
Those are front and back.
Yeah, we can share if you need them.
I don't have enough copies. So, yesterday, we received a sample template, policy template, from NISBA on the new cellphone restrictions. And the requirement is that it has to be adopted by the board and submitted to the state by August first to receive our funding. The state has allocated twenty-eight hundred and twelve dollars to Hamilton Central to support the restriction and purchase of device storages, not a lot of money, but it's some money. So, the timeline is very short, so I put together a sample timeline for you to look at, that we can discuss. So, the administrative team will meet tomorrow to, um, kind of prioritize and finalize our building level procedures and implementation plan based on this NISBA template policy. And then, the seventeenth, July seventeenth and eighteenth, we'll finalize it, those changes, I'll share that with the Policy Committee. On the twenty-first, Corey and Sung, if you're available, I'd like to have a Policy Committee meeting to review and discuss the draft policy, and then make any revisions prior to public release. We have to release this to the public for input, so that would happen July twenty-second through the twenty-eighth.
Pretty aggressive.
It's aggressive, yep. On July twenty-ninth, I would do a final review and just review it with legal. July thirtieth, if we can have a special board meeting, and that can just be the Policy Committee plus one, so we have a quorum. And then, I have to submit it through the state, uh, portal on August first, first, the policy, adopted policy, and that way, that will give the state approval to release our funding. So, I'm hoping this timeline works, it's, it's aggressive, it's short, but based on, we just received the template yesterday, it is what it is, so.
And free the thirtieth, I can handle them.
Um, I just did a quick review of the NISBA policy, it's pretty thorough, and, and it aligns. They did a initial draft, um, and their legal counsel, their policy service, made a lot of changes based on the governor's recommendations and the governor's law that was released, so those are all included in this new draft. So, I think it, we shouldn't have a lot of changes, um, there's some options in there for us to consider, some language options that we'll have to go over, Corey and Sung, um, and then present that to, to the rest of the team.
I'm out of town on the twenty-first, can I join, uh, virtually?
Of course, yep. Yep, you can be, okay.
Um, do we think it'd be a good idea to do the special meetings early in the day on the thirtieth, to allow, um, time to do whatever you guys need to do afterwards, or do you want any?
If that works with Corey and Sung, I'm fine, any, any time on the.
I'm free, uh, I have something from one to three, um, so in the morning or after three.
I was gonna say, or we could do like noon, it's gonna take the whole thirty-two seconds to. That special meeting? We plan for it to be in the main hallway?
Main hallway, that'd be.
Okay.
And we only need.
You don't need me.
A quorum.
Right.
Yeah.
Does noon work down for you, or does?
So, you can always send your.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can make it happen.
The thirtieth?
But, I mean, if Sung and Corey are available, the Policy Committee, I'm fine with them, just tell me to, I don't need to be here. As long as we. just tell me to, I don't need to be here, as long as we, like, we're gonna have an option to review it and comment before.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I can do any time, thirtieth.
Gonna do like eleven or twelve, just to give them some time if they need to do whatever?
Whenever time works.
Yeah, that's fine.
Not between one and two.
That work?
So why don't we do that, and then if anything happens with anybody and you guys can't make it, just let me know and I can be like the backup person to come in, if that works. Yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna do noon?
Noon on the thirtieth.
Noon on the thirtieth?
So I give you enough time for three or one?
Yeah.
Put it on here. Seven thirty, we have a special meeting. It shouldn't be, a long one, and then we'll, the rest of the team will have, have it on the twenty-first to look at, we'll just all plan to be ready to review it that night. We can.
What's my twenty-first, do we want to have a policy committee?
The twenty-first, the same for me, I have something from one to three.
Sung, when will you be able to?
Oh, any, anytime, as long as I can join virtually on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Yeah. Anytime.
What time?
For me, maybe after three is a little easier, because I'll be done with stuff for the day.
Sure.
So we did like three-thirty, that's not keeping people here.
Three-thirty? That work? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just know that there were a lot of parents that were really interested in this particular issue, maybe, I don't know, it's appropriate, but making sure that people who are interested would know about that public comment period.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, when we push it on parent square, we'll put all the information on commenting and.
Great.
I mean, it's pretty, the NISBA policy is pretty, like I say, it's pretty thorough, so I don't, I don't know if there will be a lot of changes that can be made, I mean.
I think if anything for me, I also just, I think, what's always tricky is how do you enforce this, and I think it's gonna be a lot easier to enforce if parents are on board and they're the ones who are helping take some responsibility.
Yeah.
The fewer students we have who are, you know, if it's, there's support at home and there's parents making sure they know where the cellphones are before kids are going to class, to school.
Yeah.
That'll make things a lot easier.
Yep.
So I'm interested in knowing, so you have the public comment period, say there are like some significant and you decide, wait, maybe we need to like pull back together, is, like, would you pull back together with the policy committee, like, I'm just curious how that would look if you're like, whoa, maybe there really is something else we need to address here.
I mean, we can certainly pull the policy committee back together, I mean, speaking for me, Cory and Sung, I'm sure would be willing to, you know, if there's, if there's a lot of comment about, oh, we, we can't do it this way, you know, we should be looking at it a different way.
I don't necessarily foresee that, I just.
Yeah.
Wanted to try to foresee it in case it did.
Yeah.
So also, if there is change, like, we have to adopt one, right?
Yes.
Are there tweaks that could happen throughout the year to it, or, or at the end of next year?
The policy would be in effect for the.
For the year.
For the year.
But could we revise it?
We could revise it, certainly.
So if there was something that we, if.
I think between now and the policy committee, we have, your team will look at this and Sung and I will look at it.
Yeah.
We'll come, bring it and talk about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, and, I mean, if this is available at the district office, if somebody really wanted to look at it ahead of time, they could, right, I mean, the draft, so if there's somebody out there that would like to see it ahead of time, they, they could get the draft and look at it as well, they wouldn't have your thoughts on it at that point, but.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, just looking at it, it looks like there aren't a lot of options.
No, no, it's pretty, yeah.
It's kind of just we have to have something that falls.
We, we have to have something and, I mean, it's, it's now law, it's now.
I'm most curious about like that optional sentence part where it's like, do you include devices that can't connect to the internet, or do we not, that's pretty interested in like what's decided on with that.
Yeah, and Heather, we, we talked briefly about this today, Heather, from an elementary standpoint, like the smartwatches have been an issue in the elementary, you know, and any, if they're connected to the internet, they're not allowed. So, but the gizmo watch, apparently, you can still communicate, but it's not connected to the internet.
So I think we're just gonna have to really think about that and define it.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah. Be tricky. There'll be some growing pains.
Yeah.
But yes, it is law and, Michelle, it does have to be adopted by the first of August.
Right, I'm just thinking, like, if there was something that we needed to tweak after sitting on it, we could always do a revise later if we had to, I'm not saying that that's our best plan of action, but it could be something that, that way we could still get it through for the state, if there was something that was in question, but. Okay.
Are they leaving it up to administrators and the policy committee, I guess, to decide whether it does encompass after-school activities and what goes to?
It, it's, it's the school day on campus, so whatever we define the school day as.
Oh, I see.
Has to be enforced, so. I mean, for us, I think it's seven forty-five to two forty-five.
Okay.
Instructional time. Yeah. Because I, you know, from an extracurricular standpoint, kids are gonna have to communicate if there's a cancellation, or, you know, all of a sudden you're out on the field and there's a thunderstorm and it's canceled, you'd be picked up, like.
Oh, yeah.
So.
No, it's just that optional one each year.
Yeah.
And I think we need to, I just have to say this out loud, I think, given this too, I think we need to be better as a district communicating with parents, you know, if there's a game cancellation at noon, we've kind of left it up to coaches, and I think we got better throughout this year, but I think that there's still some progress to be made in that and making sure all coaches are using platforms or somebody's communicating, I think we just, we need to be very diligent and do a better job of that.
And that it's not just on the kids, like there are a lot of times that, well, the kids will let the parents know, and yes, they should.
But how can they know?
But now they won't be able to.
Right.
But also, they don't always, so it'd be also.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. Good luck, policy committee.
Have fun. That's why I ended up at a volleyball game in the wrong school.
Oh, no.
I missed the email, my kid didn't tell me. No, I, it's happened to me many times.
Uh-oh.
Where is everybody?
Okay, so we did this special.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Principals had reports out there, any questions or thoughts there? Thank you both for doing those.
Michelle, if I can just hand these to everyone, this is the portrait of graduate updates, I have copies for you, sorry.
You're good.
Very thick paper.
Business manager report. You? Sure.
Would you buy them?
An iced coffee.
Admin's update?
Just a couple of quick things, some discussions, there are a lot of discussion around like the new federal reconciliation bill and what that may look for school districts throughout the year, so just, again, be aware, changes are coming, I think the needs of our students could be significantly impacted depending on some variables with that, so just really, and as a district for us to be ready for some of those changes, and then, what else was I gonna say? I don't remember the other thing I was gonna talk about. Yeah, I don't remember, so that was the biggest thing, so.
Every summer we do a board retreat, so we can work on ourselves and district planning and such, because we don't have enough meetings in our world, let's pick another one, is there a week to look at? As a, let's look at this one or let's not look at this one to start?
Can we start with Bill, like, when in August does things really start picking up here at the district, though, it'd be more difficult?
Well, our admin retreat is the fifth. So.
Would it be helpful to do it before or after?
After, after the fifth.
I'd prefer to stay away from the eleventh and twelfth, I think I had plans those days.
I'm away through the thirteenth.
Okay.
I'm here the fourteenth through the twentieth. That's when my life starts getting a little crazy.
Fourteenth, we have a board meeting.
Yes.
Let's not do it that day. Eighteenth, anybody?
I can do the eighteenth.
August eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm just starting with that as a.
Yeah, I can do the eighteenth, I can do the nineteenth.
I can do the eighteenth, it's fine.
Do.
It'll be a little crazy, but I can do it.
Otherwise, it's, yeah.
It's the day all our families come back, but I can do it.
Is the nineteenth better?
No, that whole week is just bad, so let's just do the eighteenth.
Is there a timed start that's better for you?
No.
Four, five, six, like?
Whenever, I can do during the day too, it doesn't matter, I'll make it happen.
Do we wanna do a daytime one and do half-day, or do we wanna do evening?
Do we have a sense of what content we want, because we, last, our last one, we kind of said, let's set some more large goals, and where in the past we kind of got a little bit more into like the, like weeds with things and we kind of took a step back, so I think looking at those larger goals again, making sure they're a good spot.
Yep.
Is important, but then also looking forward, like, might be helpful to hear, from your admin team about like what, what they think, especially for this next year, which is gonna be preparing for transition.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so maybe it's not as much talking from us, but some listening.
Listening.
To, to the admin team, so I guess, if that was the case, people think that, then we'd also want to know when your, when your team would be available.
Mm-hmm. Do you have?
My initial thought is, you're gonna do with your admin team, okay?
Yep.
You're gonna.
All right.
I mean, could you do a morning with your admin team, and after you have a release guys?
Amanda, are you gone then?
August fifth?
Yeah, when are you gone?
Because it goes in hand with what you guys also need to be and talk about, right?
True, good, so that would mean on the fifth, we would do like noon four.
I can, I can do the morning on the fifth, but not the other. Same on the sixth.
Don't we already have a meeting?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
That's for church, so.
And it goes in hand, right?
That's the only.
Yes and no.
Do you need to make, not make a war of that?
Cory, do you think so? I don't think so.
No, I think that one, we're gonna be looking at some broader things, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Let's stick with.
I think we, we, we thought about the, because our, our next meeting as far as the church goes is looking at the job ad, and I think there we're not, we're, we're gonna get into less specifics about that job ad, that.
Yeah.
A lot more the, what we'll get from people, from stakeholders will be more for the interview process and the move.
So the admin team can meet with you after that.
Mm-hmm.
So why don't I look at some dates tomorrow and get back to you?
Yep.
Amanda, what are the dates that you're gone?
Yeah, it's really like, it's really the eighteenth, yeah, I mean, I think we should just, I really do think we should look at and we can see who from the admin team can join.
Okay.
And if they can't, like, we'll have to work through if they can't, because it, we don't have a ton of open days from the sounds of it, do we wanna do a half-day and start at one, and just do one to four type of thing, so that if we are asking the admin team to be here, it's during more work hour than not?
Yeah, or for me, if it's, depending on the day.
I do like the larger chunk, I feel like there's times that we've tried doing like two hours, and I feel like it's not enough, I feel like it's like rushed, it's not cohesive.
At the moment, I have a meeting from top to one, it won't last that long.
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, but I can start here at one.
I don't think you're gonna give the full admin team on the eighteenth, I gave them four dates today, I think the dates were August twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth, right? I'd have to look.
Mm-hmm. Why don't we schedule for the eighteenth, and then we'll check tomorrow with the admin team and.
If not, we'll.
Yeah.
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 Your plan?
Keep your eighteenth and, yeah.
So we're gonna do one to four if that date works.
One to four.
Okay.
Does that work? For initial?
That's what I'm trying to check for.
Wait, I should check more. Hi, Internet, are you guys still there? Well, there's one watching right now, and considering the fact that I'm watching, I'm guessing that there's no community participation happening, I will give it a second in case that one person is not me, but we have no exact session items tonight, so seeing no participation, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? Who's second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, six seventeen, eighteen now, collect over.
That's good.
Sounds pretty good.
Matt?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
If you could.
So Jen, were you just talking about?